Two months.
Really? With USAID?
No.
Really? That's near Fest. Yeah, I.
Okay.
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 Near Longeros Tennis Room. And it is a sign of. Dedicated is life. So in the lower floor, there are lots of. Huge oil paintings that you would consider sketches. You know, and so every time some of the. They.
Okay.
Recording in progress.
Just can't see us.
So we can, we can make funny faces and.
Perfect. Are we ready? Welcome to the planning commission meeting of Tuesday, June 11th at four o'clock, maybe a little later. We have a roll call of members.
Sure. Chair Dawson.
Here.
Vice Chair Bluth.
Here.
Commissioner Brassfield.
President.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Here.
Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
Commissioner Latassa.
Here.
And Commissioner Silva.
Here.
Okay. And I can go ahead and announce the staff members present if you'd like.
Please.
We have our planning manager Levi Hill. We have our associate planner Matthew Bugger, and we have myself, recording secretary Erica Barrera. And I can go ahead and let the inform, the public know how they can participate.
Please.
Information on participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is on this meeting's agenda, which is online at isearchmonterey.gov. Remote commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In the chamber, we recommend keeping phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with the meeting. Thank you for participating in your city government.
Thank you. Onto consent agenda, the approval of minutes for May 14th. Has anyone taken a look at those? They look good. Can I have a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion. I'll make, I've reviewed them and I make a motion to approve those minutes.
And a second. Second from Dan. Yeah. Roll call.
Sure. Chair Dawson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
I'm not present at that meeting.
Okay, I'll mark you abstained. Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
And Commissioner Silva.
Yes.
Great, those minutes are approved.
Okay, so let's go on to public hearings. Item number three.
Sorry, Chair. First, we'll have to open it up for public comments for items not on the agenda.
Okay, gotcha. Here we have an opportunity for general public comments not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak on that, it's, it's gotta be within our purview here. But please, please join us if that's what you want to do. No, no one from inside.
No hands are raised online.
All right. So again, we're considering 95 Prescott Avenue Use Permit Amendment Application PA 240091 to allow expanded alcohol service hours. Do we have a staff report?
We do indeed. I will share my screen. Good afternoon. My name is Matthew Buggert, and I'm an associate planner with the City of Monterey's Planning Division, and today we're here to talk about 95 Prescott Avenue for a use permit amendment for the expansion of operating hours. The, just as a slight note, the notice that went out was for an expansion of alcohol service hours, and in general, it will include all operating hours for the business. Today's planning commission meeting. Recommendation from city staff is that the planning commission adopt the resolution approving the use permit amendment with conditions. The subject property is in the northern part of the city, near to Canary Row. And there was a approved permit UP dash 22 dash 0079 in 2022 for this property specifically for a commercial and entertainment. Recreation use for a mini golf restaurant bar combination. Within that use permit, it required a permit amendment for any adjustment to the operating hours that were included in that use permit. At the bottom of the slide, it shows the proposed change. In the approved use permit, the hours were for. The week from Sunday to Thursday from 11:00 AM to midnight, and then on the weekends, it would be open later till 2:00 AM. They'd like to do a brunch service there on the weekends and make it a more consistent hours. So the proposed hours is from 9:00 AM to 2:00 AM. There are. All of the existing conditions of approval would apply. The only change to the use permit would be their operating hours. So all of their employees are to receive ABC license training. Their hours are limited to the proposed hours. There would be a 12-month review by planning commission. They haven't previously come to you guys before because they hadn't been in operation yet. Now they're in operation. There would be a 12-month review by planning commission after this adjustment to their hours. And the violation, any violation of the conditions of approval could result in revocation of these permit. Findings required for approval is that the proposed use is in accordance with the zone, and it is permitted by the use permit. And includes provisions for security, limited hours, and conditions of approval. The proposed use must be found that the use would not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, and would not be detrimental to properties in the vicinity. The use is consistent with the commercial land use and limits hours as would be done by the conditions. And the proposed use must be found to comply with any specific conditions. Again, this is an adjustment to one of the conditions in there, and they would need to adhere to those. With that, staff's recommendation is that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving the use permit amendment with conditions of approval. The applicant is, I believe, on the line. If not, otherwise they are aware of this, and that concludes staff's presentation.
Any questions of staff? No, no, no.
Sure. What kind of population are they getting between nine and 11:00 in the morning?
As.
Just a question.
That may be a question better for the applicant. As far as I know, it's to accommodate brunch mostly on Sundays. They have breakfast tacos and breakfast items.
Sure. Can we confirm that the applicant's online?
We can, we can ask out of the.
The applicant is. Is it?
Did you have a question, Mike?
Okay, I don't believe that's the applicant. I don't see the applicant online.
Sure. If the applicant for this item is online, can you please raise your hand on the Zoom call?
No hands are going up.
Doesn't appear the applicants with us.
That's okay. Did you have a question, Mike?
I was just gonna comment that. County Rose seems to be getting more of a reputation of recreational use. These different kind of projects that we're seeing, and I think this is a continuation of that, and I've, I've had some very favorable comments from the public about the use of Canary Row for these kind of recreational facilities. So I, I support the idea.
Better here than Carmel, huh?
Well, yeah, more San City.
I guess I have a question. Oh, so thanks, Matthew. Though I assume the police department has to comment on this.
Yes, and there have been no cases yet. They've only been open for a month and a half or so, two months. But there have not been any cases.
Okay. No less.
And again, there will be a 12-month review.
Yeah.
As well.
So we, we don't have the applicant on, on the online?
I don't see the applicant online.
No. It was said. So public comment, does anyone out there have anything to say?
There are no hands raised online.
Nope. Okay, so.
I make a recommendation that we accept the project as. Explained by staff.
It's a, a motion.
You have a motion in a second.
In a second. Any comments on the, on the motion? No? Okay, let's have.
I'll just say, you know, it's. It's such an unusual part of the city, you know, it's such a heavy tourist area and such an intensive kind of recreational use anyway, just so appropriate, it's.
Is this better than a spaghetti company?
I don't know. Good question.
It used to be there.
But it, it just seems like the alcohol use is, is almost, you know, I don't know. It, it doesn't seem like a big deal in a place like that. It's just going on all the time anyway.
True, true. Do we have a roll call vote?
Sure. Chair Dawson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
And Commissioner Silva.
Yes.
Okay, that motion is approved. The decision is appealable within 10 days to city council. We have applications online or in our planning office.
And just don't wait 10 days. Okay, on to public hearing number four. Consider 620 Divisadero Street Use Permit UP 240020 to allow modifications to an existing wireless facility on an existing monopine structure. Okay, we don't need to rest this. Okay.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. I don't know if you can see me, given the.
We challenges.
Let me share my screen too. So here we go. So as stated. This project is a continuation of the hearing for a new dish wireless facility. At 620 Divisadero Street. Let's give a little project background. The project was presented to you on your May 14th meeting and continued for the following reasons. Construction activities and access on Jesse Street versus Divisadero Street was brought up by. Some residents on Jesse Street and also commissioners and. Quite more details about the fiber vault construction and appearance, its appearance on Jesse Street. And also. There were questions about the condition of the existing monopine and surrounding trees. Just I'll go over the project briefly again for you. So the project location is on. The Crown Water Company's project site over here, and it's monopine at this location near the tanks. Cidios over here, here's Jesse Street, Divisadero Street. So it is near residence, but the monopine is tucked in right about over here. Again, the ownership is the California American Water Company. Applicant is Daniel Pierce and Jason Provitz with Crown Castle. The actual wireless carrier will be Dish Wireless LLC. It's in the residential zone and also designated as residential in the general plan. So basically at. So basically at thirty two foot elevation level, they'll be removing some existing antennas that were originally placed there by Metro PCS. And, and again, this whole monopine and the original facility goes back to two thousand and one under UP oh one dash oh four six. So it'll be through three new panel antennas and mounts. Six new remote radio units. There'll be a concrete equipment pad down a ground level and a new fiber trunk line, some new cabinets. And they're going to install other support related equipment and conduit. And for that new fiber trunk line, they'll be, I'll show you later in the presentation, there'll be a little vault along Jesse Street. So project review process, we're looking at this as a new project and the purpose is to improve dishes five G service in Monterey, a hundred fifty day shot clock. Again, here's the project plans. Here's Stewart and Divisadero Streets and Jesse Street. So the existing monopine is right there. There's an existing equipment building right over here and then also a the new equipment pad will be here, the fiber conduit will be constructed along an existing easement out to Jesse Street where there is a utility pole and then there'll be a little utility vault over there for the fiber optics cable. So again, here's the existing monopine, the new equipment area, there'll be a couple of cabinets as shown here. Not too extensive. And then here's the antenna layout, three antennas and three different arrays. That this will be within the monopine and within the foliage of the monopine. Here's the elevation drawing. There are, is an existing facility above it. And then this again will be the dish wireless antennas that are replaced, replacing the Metro PCS antennas that are no longer in use. And then here at the ground level is the new equipment area. So the focus of some of the questions was that fiber optics cable that will come from the support equipment area over here, about a hundred and twenty feet out to along the fence line with Jesse Street and then pop under the fence and then there'll be a underground vault which will look like this along Jesse Street. So to give you a little more information on that fiber line and its construction, there was a question about providing an easement and maybe reversing that line to go to Divisadero Street, which is down here instead of Jesse Street. That was not amenable to the California American Water Company. They have a number of easements on their property. They have a number of other water lines, as you can imagine, on their property. So they did not want to uncover the property with additional easements because there already is an easement in this location. So I'll just briefly go over the scope for the construction of this fiber line and the fiber vault. But the applicant can add to this as needed or embellish on it. So it probably will take approximately eight working days and approximately two days for actually the work on Jesse Street to build that little vault. And then they're on Jesse Street, they're anticipating a hand dug utility trench. There'll be two trucks and four people working on this part of the project. And then after it's installed, there'd be an ongoing inspection every forty five days. I also want to point out that, you know, there'll be work over here for this vault coming off the property. But the actual construction equipment and the people who will be working on it can access up Divisadero Street and park on the property. So we can limit some of the construction activity on Jesse Street just to the actual digging of these, for these facilities. Then we have the antenna and the ground support work, which will be focused on this area. Again, twenty one working days approximately. Tower construction, which is the antennas and support equipment would take two trucks with approximately four people. And that would be coming, again, it, it is possible for them to come off Divisadero Street, park in this area and work on the project without any construction impacts, let's say to the neighbors on Jesse Street. And then the ground cabinet work, one truck with four people. There was also some question about the landscaping that was installed with the original permit. And as you can see, there is quite a bit of landscaping and trees that were planted around the original monopine facility, which is back here. Now, this isn't exactly from Jesse Street, but it is looking from that direction. So it does appear that the monopine does blend well into that environment. We also put some special conditions on the project that the primary access to the site again shall be from Divisadero Street. And Jesse Street access should be avoided to the greatest extent possible. But as you can see, there will need to be some work out on Jesse Street. The antennas and support equipment shall be completely sealed and integrated into the stealth monopine. But this that if the, there is some deterioration over time, they have to replace missing or discarded foliage. Just moving on to the RF study, wasn't brought up as a big issue on the last project, last hearing, but I'll go through it very quickly. Proposed antennas would be compliant with the FCC radio frequency rules and no public safety limits would be exceeded at ground level or at any of the adjacent residential properties or the Presidio. So as you can see, we do have the blue is the public limit which extends out forty one feet. The occupational limit is eighteen feet from the actual antennas in all directions. And this is a site plan view of that, the forty foot, one foot public RF array. And then the occupational array is eighteen feet. To give you another perspective, this shows how this would look on the aerial photo. So again, the, this shows the public limit. It would not extend on to any residential property which starts over here or even the Presidio property over here. It would be confined to the water tank property. We do have some special conditions for the radio frequency arrays that post installation. There are coverage reports required within thirty days of installation. Occupational personnel are to be trained in RF safety and equipped with personal protective equipment and appropriate RF signing, just like all our wireless projects shall be displayed in a visible area for these workers. There'll be no public allowed on the site. So with that, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the use permit UP twenty four zero zero two zero with the recommended findings and conditions of approval. So thank you. I'm available for questions. I saw that the applicants are online for this project.
Questions for staff?
One quick one on Exhibit C. Here, Jerry. It shows the reach of the tree and the radiation for forty one feet and eighteen, or forty one feet for blue and eighteen feet for yellow.
Yes.
Any of those touch on the property lines of the residences that are so close to that facility?
I think this is the best figure to show that, no, it would be here's the, I believe the property line for the residence is somewhere around here and that would not extend onto that. It would be entirely within the Crown Water Company property. I couldn't tell you what that distance is, but probably like ten, fifteen feet maybe. And same thing on the Presidio property, there is some parking over here, but they don't have any buildings or anything else in that area.
Any more questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. So thanks, Jerry. So the, there was a letter from the neighbors that we received this afternoon. And of course, their biggest concern is the visual. Well, one of their big concerns is the visual issue of this equipment and the vegetation screening it. So this, this fiber line trench, is that, has somebody gone out and sort of paced it off to make sure there are no trees in the way of that trench? Or is there a survey? I think Levi, were you out there yesterday, Sam?
Yeah, so I visited the site and it didn't appear based on the plans that any, any of the existing vegetation would be impacted by the trench. As it was previously noted, it's in an existing easement. So typically plantings aren't allowed within utility easements of this nature. Additionally, Jerry, as Jerry mentioned, it's going to be a hand dug trench. So obviously there's a very limited ability to impact existing trees on site with, with not actually incorporating any equipment or heavy equipment use. And then as always, any trees that if, were determined another tree would need to be removed or impacted would require the tree removal permit issued by the city. And those are always accompanied with a replacement requirement as well.
And I guess another question, that, that there was some discussion at the last meeting in May about the the adequacy of the previous approval, was it two thousand and one? And, you know, there were neighbors who were claiming that the the, the trees were never properly maintained or, but died and that sort of thing. What is your assessment of, because I mean Jerry addressed that in his report and what is your assessment of that?
Yeah. So obviously the, the original approval is from two thousand and one. It did have landscaping requirements approved with that approval. It's hard to decipher from the plans that were approved with that actual permit or the individual trees on site. Which one of those are considered replacement trees and which of those are existing trees? The applicant did confirm that the trees that were planted are still, still there and that there is still an irrigation system that is operable. It is, I believe it's a gravity fed tank system that does have to be refilled, but they did confirm that there was adequate water in the tank. So there is an irrigation system on site that is irrigating the trees. So city staff's assessment is that that requirement was, was satisfied and the trees have, have been maintained. And I think this image does a good job of showing that there's a considerable amount of existing vegetation and mature vegetation on the site.
Thank you. Peter? Questions? Mike?
Couple of questions. In that thirty foot circle, blue circle you showed, it shows half of one tank being exposed to the radiation. Is that correct?
Go back to that figure.
Blue circle?
Yeah, that's right there.
It shows half of that tank being exposed to that RF. And that's also, how tall is that tank?
I believe the tank is thirty feet or less in height. So it'd be lower than the arrays here by a few feet.
But if, if that yellow zone is about fifteen feet in diameter, it's what appeared to be from your illustrations. It would be, would it not be radiating part of that tank?
Maybe the upper reach, I think the tank would come about right over here maybe.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I asked the question because is there any warnings? Would there be any warnings on that tank? That if you go up on the roof, you'd be walking into an RF zone?
So I can actually weigh in on this. So Commissioner Brassfield, there, there's actually a separate facility that is located on the tanks themselves. So there's, there's antennas and signage located on the water tank. A separate carrier has antennas.
Yeah, and that's part of the question because how do you sort which one is the danger?
Well, there's the signage that's on the tank. The signage on the tank would be associated with the carrier that has located their antennas on the tank.
On their site, but not adjoining, radiating over that tank. There is, it's my point is there, I don't see a notation that there is signage regarding the danger coming from the other cell tower. And that's, that's the whole part of the climate of this issue is that a lot of these places, you have multiple radiating signals with different phone numbers and different warnings. How is a person not trained as an RF engineer supposed to sort that out if he's there for a work problem?
So I think my response would be that they would contact the numbers on the signage and that it's possible that they would have to contact multiple carriers.
Multiple. And that's I think that we need to work on that. It's, it's fraught with all kinds of problems. And now from workers' comp point of view, if a man walks through that RF zone and he is radiated, in theory, he can file a claim every time he does that. So that if there is a, in history, that later on, he becomes a victim from that exposure and it could be anything, not just RF. That becomes the workers' comp issue. And I'm just trying to sort through the workers' comp issues as it relates to dangers.
Yeah, I don't think it'd be a city workers' comp issue, so I don't think it'd be within the purview of this commission.
That's right. And so you can't just, well, it could be city if it's police, fire, public works. But typically it's other people. They're still exposed to dangers. And I just, I think we need to look at that. It's, right now it's pretty broad. We go up into some of these attics, some of these hotels that work and there will be three, at least three companies with all different blacks. How do you sort through it? How does a guy that has to go through there understand what he's in danger of? If there is all these different warnings? And you're playing Russian roulette on which one you called that showed off power?
That's a very good point, Commissioner. Maybe the applicant can expand on that as well. But the warning signs are typically what the FCC does require.
I can hold the question for the applicant.
Yeah, I don't think we have any further response. So yeah, we would defer that to the applicant.
Is, a couple of other questions? There was a interesting report. And one of the questions was, are any of these sites abandoned? I, I assume, since you went up there, that there are no abandoned RF sites up there?
No, the only antennas that are not currently in operation are the ones being proposed to be removed as a part of this application.
For Jerry, one of the things that we normally see on those reports is the number of old equipment removed to be replaced by the new equipment. I didn't see that in this report.
Yeah, I didn't see them removed.
Yeah, let me see if we have that.
Will install.
I do have the PDF of the plans. Let me see what that shows. Here's the removal. It's a little bit small, so I don't know if you can see that, but it's remove the two foot level. I believe it was the same number of antennas.
Yeah, we can allow the applicant, they can, on, and it's my understanding they're actually removing six existing antennas and replacing with three. But applicant for the specifics.
I was just looking.
That's correct.
But there is a removal.
New translator.
Right, there is a removal as a part of the project.
Thank you. Can we hear from the, yeah, applicant?
We'll make sure we don't have any other questions for staff at this time. All right, yes, we can check in with the applicant.
The applicant, Daniel Pierce. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Yes, so as far as the, the dangers of, of the RF, just, just to address that in the signage. I guess we do have signage at, at our side, of course, that speaks to our, our emissions and the numbers to call as, as Levi had said, the water tank does as well. So I would, I would say so for the workers that are on the water tank, you know, the, the antennas on the water tank themselves, you know, and, and those emissions. Those would be the dangers that they would want to consider, right? And so that number is, is on the tank. So as far as, as any additional signage, you know, I, I just, in my opinion here, it would, it would be adequate at our site that we have it. I'm willing to take any other questions if there is any with the, as far as the equipment we're replacing. It looks like Jerry did have a bullet there that, that states that we are removing that, the antennas on that second rad center and, and locating a new carrier onto the site at that second rad setter in Dish. So it looks like that was called out.
I had a question about personal, personal equipment. Do, do you provide a I guess a radio receiver to, to all the people who work on this stuff so that if they do step into the wrong area, that they're going to get a notice on their, on their, their receiver? Do you provide those?
We do have Norm with Dish on the call. I think he'd be more well versed in, in discussing that.
I went ahead and promoted Norman to a panelist and allowed him.
We ask him questions?
Yeah, let's see if he can answer the questions already been asked first. Norm, do you want to respond to that question?
Good afternoon, Honorable Commissioners. Yeah, the, to answer your question, I guess, about the EME reports and the, and the, and the form that we've actually submitted with the application reflects compliance with the emission levels, you know, allowed in that area. As, as Daniel had mentioned, there is signage on the property that addresses EME emissions. The technicians and people accessing facilities are trained in understanding locations of, you know, the installations themselves, the antenna, the output. And they take corrective measures and making sure that they're compliant with ANSI standards for safety in site access and site maintenance. It's, you know, look me, if you could go back to the illustration of the actual emissions coming off the panels themselves in the EBI report. There's nothing that reflects the actual tank, so it's unfortunate. We can't really see the proximity of the tank to the actual antenna. See, you've got something there that kind of, it's somewhat scaled. We're now looking at a site plan as to where the actual elevation of the tank is in relation to the location of the antennas. Yeah, if you look at, and if you look at the same site plan illustration of the EME report, go back to the yellow and blue looking down on the installation. Where is the tank in relation to that EME output? Could be in that white area, for example. So unknown in terms of the location of the tank in relation to the pole. A little unknown in terms of relations to how much traffic is out there, how often are people on top of that tank and for what reason? If it is an RF trained technician, which they should be, being certified and licensed to do the work form, they take all necessary precautions into, into consideration, especially with surrounding it, antenna installations. So anybody other than the technicians should read the signage and to always err, you know, at the outside, so to speak, you know, take every precaution, you know, into consideration when you access a site.
Can I continue my questioning?
Go ahead, see if you can.
Well, if that's the case, what, did the CalM have that same training if they have to go up on their tank?
Oh, definitely they should have that training. They should be aware of all possible, you know, variables that are any property, whether it's unstable soils to a wireless facility, things of that, that nature, infrastructure before they do any kind of, you know, groundwork or excavation work, you know, these water district properties I think are actually very well managed, very well secure. So they would, obviously there's considerations for their staff and their maintenance crews that need be aware of what's, you know, what's the lay of the land, so to speak, on their property. They need to adjust and adapt to what they're working with.
How about police and fire that have to respond?
Well, that's a great question. I don't know what level of training police and fire have, but I believe I'm not a fireman or a emergency technician of any sort, but I would I would make the assumption that they'd be well informed and well trained of all vertical elements that they have to scale or climb. What kind of, you know, work are they dealing with, whatever, you know, they're on a property that's, has antennas on it or they have a property that has asbestos in the paint or lead in the paint? I mean, yeah, they, they should be aware of all these different issues that are incumbent upon a property, you know, it's, it's I think it's part of the dangers that they deal with on a day to day basis, not just the, the radio frequencies. And for all intents or purposes, the, the blue and the yellow, you know, those are, I would say those are safe areas in the blue. I'd say that sixteen feet out the face, I've always been told this since I've been, I've been working in this industry for, for twenty nine years. They say stay sixteen feet away from the face of a panel. So this report really airs, you know, above and beyond, you know, more of a, a greater distance there than really, you know, so they give you two feet of insurance, you know, don't go any closer than eighteen feet. Now, while sixteen feet's always been the measure that we've been going by over the last almost three decades now. So really, that's the worst case scenario, if you will. But that circle should actually be a little smaller on the illustration, but we give it to you just to be safe and sorry.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Can we put this out to the public?
I'll go ahead and remind the public the information on iSearchMonterey.org. I currently see no hands raised online.
Give them a minute to come back with their gin and tonic.
There's one attendee, Judy Cole, their hand is not raised.
Not raised? Okay, so let's bring it back to the commission.
We have two members in attendance. We haven't checked for public comment in the chamber yet.
We do have someone. Okay, good.
Hi, I'm Lori Pettinam from Jesse Street, submitted the letter that you read this afternoon. And I'm representing a number of neighbors who weren't able to get off work to be here today. So I first want to recognize the team that's been working on this. I know it's a very complicated project. And we have had really good communication with staff at planning department and also with the applicant to try to figure out what we can do based on the constraints that everybody's working under. So I do appreciate that. We didn't get everything we wanted, but we're, we're, we're all communicating, we're doing the best we can. So we appreciate that. I would like to come back to the question of the landscaping because that is still an issue for us, even if it doesn't appear to be an issue from the pictures that you're seeing. The applicant did submit photos that show you what the tower looks like from a particular point of view. But that doesn't really capture what it looks like from my kitchen sink or from our neighbor's master bedroom window when they look out and that's what they see. So it really depends on what angle you're looking at and where you are. And I think it's worth reminding everyone that according to our current city code, this would be a disfavored location for a cell tower. We all are aware of that. And when the tower was approved in 2001, one of the justifications for choosing that site was that it was a well forested area and the tower would blend right in. Right? And at the time, there were more trees on the site. In the last twenty three years, a lot of those pine trees have come down, branches have fallen. And the tower is actually more visible now than it was twenty years ago, even with the additional plantings. A lot of the trees that were planted in 2019 as part of the landscape plan are not really flourishing yet. There are oak trees that are still sticks. They don't really fill out and cover much of anything. And it's going to take a long time for that to happen. And we would like to encourage you to consider having the applicant or CalM or whoever the right party is work with the neighbors to try to figure out where we can plant additional trees or shrubs to shield the tower from the views that we have from the homes adjacent to the property. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any others out there? No, sir? Okay, let's bring it back to the commission for comments and, and, you know, in a vote.
I have, I have just a quick comment in response to what we just heard. I'm sympathetic to the neighbors' concerns. That was partly why this got continued after all. And the, I guess that what's going through my mind is how do you go about if we were to make a special condition to increase the landscaping in some manner? How do we do that? Do we, do we compel the applicant to work, say, with the city forester? It should be somebody qualified and not just, you know, the neighbor isn't, not somebody from the ownership or the, or the, you know, the Dish network. It needs to be somebody that actually knows what they're doing, especially in with respect to the the proximity of these antennas and how that's going to impact the future landscape. And we already heard that these oak trees are not flourishing and it could very well be because it's the radiation that's around there. So even if we were to make a special condition to do all of this, we would want to know what measures that a qualified landscape person could take to ensure that it's going to actually succeed.
I think that's a question for staff.
That's an excellent question, and I think that I would agree that it makes the most sense to have a qualified professional assess the property. And, and that would most likely be someone like the city's forester. I will note that I think it, it, it's challenging to address this particular concern with landscaping, given that the tower and the work performed on the tower is in excess of thirty two feet in height. There's no tree that will be planted at this stage of this project that will adequately screen the tower at that height. We just heard a comment related to the original landscaping requirement required in 2001 and that those trees have not been able to mature to a point where they're adequately screening. I think we'd have a similar instance if we required additional landscaping at this point. I, I don't, I think city staff is concerned with the adequacy of the any, any special requirement in addressing the actual concern at hand. It seems that it'd be probably more prudent to require enhanced steeling, maybe additional foliage on the tower itself that can maybe screen some of the equipment more, more effectively. However, so yes, I, I think that it's going to be, it would be very challenging to coordinate additional plantings on the site while coordinating between the city forester, the property owner, being CalM, and it's in the carrier of the, who's operating on the facility.
Is that the way it's normally done, Levi?
So as you know, a lot of, this is kind of a oddball application when it comes to wireless facilities in the city. Most of our applications for wireless facilities are on, kind of more in our built, our built environment or on, on existing buildings sheltered behind parapets or something architectural feature. So this is kind of out of the ordinary. I will say it's a stealthed facility. The applicant did provide updated photos of the site in which it seems the steeling is somewhat effective, given the amount of mature vegetation on the site. So I think it, I, I, I've not seen landscaping used as a, as an effective means for screening of standalone wireless facilities, just given the height of the towers themselves.
But twenty five years also has, mother nature has her own way of doing things.
As you know, trees, trees in the, in, on the peninsula don't always last very long.
Brown cover up to about eight feet might have been good for ten years. But at twenty five years, it may be too tall or some have died and, and mother nature doesn't conform with our rules. So we have this problem. What do you think, Pete?
Well, I, I still think it's worth the effort to at least reach out to the city forester at a minimum and get some initial feedback as to whether or not he believes this is actually even feasible. And if it is, then maybe take it to the next step and, and have a special condition that compels the applicant to come back to the planning staff with the landscape proposal. It doesn't have to come back to us.
Is there any logic to having the forester coordinate with some of the neighbors? Is that, is that too is, is that too micromanage?
I think that the, you know, any condition that, that the commission may feel inclined to add to the approval that involved the city forester, we obviously would coordinate closely with city planning staff. And I think, I think city planning staff has a pretty good understanding of what the neighbors' concerns are and that screening from their vantage point. So we're looking and we know what property lines those are.
What you're saying is, is true about the, the height of the facilities, the ability, but you know, pine trees, ten or fifteen years, they do grow up.
Sure.
It might be a possible sort of a
I might also
kind of solution there.
I might also suggest that these companies don't just deal with our problems, they deal with these things regionally and a lot more experience on going into a site and masking the equipment. So I think if, if we're going to tie in our city forester, we also need to tie in representative from the company who has experience in dealing with these masking issues. Use that experience to try to meet what the goal that Pete has put up.
Sure. And Steph would be happy to, to, you know, if the commission wanted to apply a condition, Steph's happy to coordinate that effort between the city forester, the applicant, and then also the adjacent property owners to see what the, what's feasible as far as additional plantings.
I think that we've pretty much come to a consensus as a condition, no matter when we reach that point, but other issues. Anybody else have, Sandy?
I just wanted to say that in the resolution proposed, you have findings that are very general and very broad and applied to just about any one of these facilities in the first section findings. Then you have special conditions of approval. And then finally, it goes back to other broad and general conditions that would be applied just about any project of this nature. But the letter from the neighbors wants some want some assurance that trees and shrubs that are inadvertently damaged should be replaced. They want the crews to post notice of anticipated construction dates. And this is not reflected on these conditions of approval. And then finally, what Peter and Mike have been talking about, they would like to see some additional trees and shrubs on Jesse Street and to be assured, assured that the new plantings are served by some irrigation system. And none of this is on the special conditions of approval that are printed right here. So I think that we can add a few special conditions of approval. And just as somebody who deals with plants, you have these trees that are enormous, that are the height of this fake stealth pole. Then you've got scrub oaks that haven't grown to their proper twelve feet, fifteen feet. And then you have the opportunity to use something like, well, I, I And then you have the opportunity to use something like, well, I, I use Instant Hedge. Instant Hedge is a company in Oregon that delivers six-foot hedges of varying types of plants that could be used inside the chain link fence. I read that my heart goes out to people who live around this particular site because it is imposing, and in their opinion, at least as expressed at the planning commission level, dangerous. So, you know, choose a height and see what we can do to, as Mike says, mask the, the site. I think at the least, we should include a new special condition of approval that deals with the residents' concerns.
Sure, so I'll just respond to that. So the, the resolution that you're signing from was included in our draft packet that was published last Friday. The letter that you're referencing was received, I think, around 2:00 today.
Okay, fair enough.
You might also want to look at the camouflaging of the site as being generic. So whatever is going to make the biggest impact, and I think Levi's right, additional artificial coverage around the antennas on the pole is probably going to have the most immediate relief, given the problems that have been expressed. I think any of the, you know, natural foliage, like trees or shrubs, that's going to be hit or miss for those. So I think the artificial side should be given more attention than real trees being planted by the forest or shrubs, because they're not, they're going to take a while, like you said. I mean, it's 30 feet.
Remind us, the, the current proposal and conditions, do they require new self?
Yeah, I think Jerry mentioned that they were going to do repairs and to at least some
Socks on the antennas themselves.
Yeah, that was mentioned. Jerry had mentioned something about new foliage, artificial foliage on the monopole itself.
Yeah, so special condition number two references this concealment requirements and requires that they ensure that the facility, the facility be completely concealed and integrated into the stealth monopane structure.
Right, I think that gives you the opportunity to go back and make sure that it really is doing that. So as, if that's a condition of approval, then staff has a way of going back on site and being able to work with the residents to make sure that that artificial foliage is doing its job.
That's correct. Staff will be performing a final inspection on this site whenever they go through the building permit process. So prior to signing off on that final inspection, staff will be able to verify whether or not that condition has been satisfied.
Would it be reasonable to add a condition that the contractor put a notice on the site, you know, a week before or something, that about the, when the construction is going to happen?
Yeah, defer to the applicant. I think that seems reasonable. But I, before saying that, that that's doable, I would, I would prefer for the applicant to weigh in on that. But, so yeah, Norm or Daniel, can either one of you provide input on that question?
Still in comment?
Go ahead, Norm, I believe you're
Yeah, am I? Yeah, okay, great. Yeah, I don't see a problem in some sort of posting or signage. It'd be kind of a special situation where we're going to be out there for about two days on Jesse Street with a hand dig between the pole and the property line, you know, going into the property. Yeah, I'm not sure. I've never, I've never had that kind of condition of approval imposed on an application before. It's very, it's kind of an anomaly for me. I've been doing this a long time. And we've actually complied with construction criteria or codified construction hours of operation. Typically, it's, I think nothing should start before 7:00 AM or, you know, it be conducted and completed and, you know, finished off in the afternoon, no later than maybe 7:00 PM or something of that nature. There's always a window of time. We're willing to comply with whatever's codified. But anything above and beyond that, that'd be a discussion with our construction teams. They're probably going to go out and maybe, maybe stick something in the ground with a sign, you know, maybe or staple something to the utility pole, saying that construction will commence on such and such a date. But again, like I said, I don't want to speak too far ahead of myself here and promise something I'm not familiar with. But we would definitely take steps to, you know, accommodate community. And, you know, I just want to take a minute to say thank you to Jerry and to Levi for taking the time to work with us to, to arrive at a consensus on the construction and all the details that go into the coordinating and timelines and things of that nature. So it's been a good journey, and I appreciate their time and that effort. So back to the condition of rule, yeah, I definitely would meet back with staff to try and figure something out to address the concerns of the community.
Okay, can we, can we agree to create that at a special?
You know, Norm, thank you. Specifically, you're referring to the specific requirement for notification on the property owner or?
Notification would be one thing, yes.
So staff will be aware when the building permit is issued, so we can notify the property owner of that. But short of being told by the applicant when the work's going to perform, staff would not have any more information on that than they would.
That's probably the only way you're going to find out.
So we can, we can let them know whenever the building permits issued?
Well, we could, you know, add a condition to require the contractor to put a notice at, you know, the pole, you know, the week before. I don't think that's unreasonable.
I'm going to make a motion. Let's just, I, I think we're all in agreement here. So we're going to add a special condition that the applicant work with the city forester and the neighboring property owners to come to an agreement about screening landscaping that will be effective. And then to tap it into the existing water supply, so that there'll be long-term survival rate that would potentially be better than, than what we have now. And then second, the second special condition is to have the applicant post a public notice within the vicinity of the project site five days prior to construction activities, notifying the time of the commencement and conclusion of the construction.
We have a motion on the table.
More comment? First of all, it's kind of ironic. One of the FCC's pain focuses on communities and their objections to projects on cell towers is aesthetics.
Yeah.
That's what we're talking about here.
That's true.
That's what we're trying to accomplish, the aesthetics to satisfy the neighbors. I think that's important. There's an underlying issue also here. And I think it, it deserves some thought on a subcommittee with the city, other, other staff in the city regarding the dangers associated with cell towers and their transmitters and relaying that information down the chain of command to those workers. These small plaques, and we've actually had people object to putting plaques on the outside of these buildings. It's something that needs to be discussed, and it needs to be rectified on how can we best utilize the existing practices and the care of our workers to not endanger them when they have to go on calls for service? And I think that's, I would make that as a suggestion secondary to this project.
And with, with citywide training?
That's the, that's the scope.
That's there.
We're trying to accomplish.
Great.
I'll second Peter's motion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have voted on motion.
Yep, we have a motion in a second. We'll get a roll call.
Chair Dawson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bluth?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher? Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa?
Yes.
And Commissioner Silva?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. The decision is appealable within three days to the city council, and applications are found in our planning office or online.
Okay, we have, we still have the matter at hand, has not had a vote whether to approve 620 de Visadero Street.
I believe that's what just happened.
Yeah, the special condition would only be applicable if it was approved.
Yeah, so Commissioner Silva made the motion to approve the project with the addition of two special conditions. And then that motion was seconded by Commissioner Latassa. And then we just took a roll call vote, and it was approved.
Okay, fine. Commissioner, comments?
Sure, we can provide a staff update. So as noted in the staff report, just a quick follow-up. The city council at its May 21st meeting did approve the levy of assessments for our business associations. They also conducted the drawing to award the four cannabis retail licenses. So that, that drawing took place, and the, those who were drawn, it was a lottery-style drawing, and then they were able to select which part of the city they've located in based on the overlays that were previously approved by this commission. So that happened. We have not received any formal zoning clearance requests for specific locations at this time. But we will update this commission once we do receive those requests. So just to recap, there's no actual specific locations that have been identified. However, these four specific operators have been chosen by the city council. Moving forward, we do have some items on our tentatively scheduled for our June 25th meeting to other additional wireless facilities. So that'll be on June 25th. And then one thing that's not noted in the staff update in your report, pre, at the last meeting, we discussed the joint planning commission and city council meeting to consider the general plan update, including the housing element update for the city of Monterey. We had previously discussed a date of June 18th for that meeting. However, due to just ongoing conversations with HCD and preparation of the report and environmental impact report, that's being pushed to a later meeting. So I do want to let this commission know that that meeting has been, is identified for the July 16th. That'll be a joint planning commission city council meeting, July 16th. So please put that on your calendars. I'll send up, I'll send out a follow-up email to this group to get a confirmation of attendance, because I think I mentioned to some, some of the commissioners, they're, they're, we, we do have quorum challenges due to the conflict of interest maps that, when voting on these particular sites. But more information will come on that, on, leading up to the meeting, 7:00.
I have some obligations in July, which might be a problem.
Okay, yes, let's, please discuss online. Like I said, I'll be reaching out to each of you individually just to poll on attendance, and then we'll, we'll go from there. And that's, that's all the staff updates.
Terrific. Any, Commissioner comments? Yes, no, maybe, no.
Do, do any jurisdictions have special committee boards or commissions for cell tower projects? I've just, it just struck me that we spend so much time on this issue. It would almost be its own domain, you know?
That was Mike and I.
Yeah, so we, so yeah, with the formulation of the ordinance, we had a, a subcommittee. And yes, two of our commissioners served on that subcommittee. But if you're asking, do any jurisdiction to have a separate decision body for wireless applications? I'm not aware of any that, they usually, they're required to follow the same discretionary approval processes that the other projects.
Palo Alto has one.
Yeah, if anybody would, they would. But it's just, I mean, we aren't that busy. We, we have the time, and we're here, so I guess it makes sense.
So you attended some training? You're going to give us any new tips on what happened?
Yeah, so I don't know how many tips I have. I won't bore you with the details. One, one training for, with the California Preservation Foundation. So Tara spoke specifically on historic preservation and the legalities surrounding that. And then an additional conference dealing specifically with land use law. As you can imagine, a lot of that surrounded housing law. So, yeah, we're going to be very, very busy in the next, next eight years implementing all these laws.
I used to, I used to run forums on the preservation. Thank goodness I got away from that. All right, so I think we're, we're done. So we're adjourned.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, yes.